Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, November 13th, Town Council Committee of the Whole. It is 6:35. All councilors are present and accounted for. Calendar and Communications. I'm going to start this evening, then we'll bounce it down to the rest of the council. I have several things. The very first thing is the manager has asked that if you have councilors any legislative priorities that you would like to share with our legislative delegation. He will be meeting Friday with Representative Conley. So please get those items to the manager, and then he will compile a list and share it with all of us so we can see if we want to prioritize certain things. Correct? Okay. Head communication from several people. Gentlemen regarding River Road, and the manager is looking into the status of the pavement study to see when we will be revisiting that and looking at specific roads so we can answer our constituents' concerns. We all received a copy of a letter from a constituent regarding a commission member, and Mr. Burt also received that letter. And Mr. Burt took it upon himself to look into the matter to see how we should handle this, and I'm going to turn it to Mr. Burt right now to address, please.
Sure. I spoke with the attorney briefly about this. It's laid out in the Town Charter how you handle removal from an office, from a committee, from any of the ABCs. Essentially, if you fail to attend at least 60 percent of the regular meetings without reasonable explanation during a calendar year, failure to comply with the duties and obligations imposed by local, state, or federal law, or violations of the Town Code of Ethics, if such exists. I kind of ran the scenario by what the letter said to the attorney, and she did not think that that rose to anything that would be actionable by the council.
Thank you very much for taking care of that for us, so everything's in order. A couple other things. I attended the Naval and Maritime Consortium launch, which was a very good experience. Local businesses, colleges, and the Town of Groton sponsored this organization, and it was a very nice kickoff for the work that we're all going to be doing together. We attended the Veterans Ceremony at the City Municipal Building with a couple other councilors, and various internal meetings. Counselor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, I guess, make an announcement. Over the last several weeks, I've been working with John Burt and our Public Works Director, Gary Schneider, on looking at various sites for a potential rain garden. I reached out to the EECT, which stands for the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, and the Human Services Building, in conjunction with the EECT, will be establishing a 25-by-18-foot rain garden that will catch some of the rainwater runoff that comes from the Human Services Building. So rain gardens are a great way to capture stormwater runoff. As you know, when we build roads or various developments, a lot of the rainwater may not go back into the ground because of those surfaces and may lead right into our waterways, which can obviously impact our environment and certainly the critters that live within them. So I know that they're in the final stages to, you know, look at the site, call the, what is it, some of the utilities?
Yeah, they're getting ready to dig, so they called in to dig this afternoon, and if everything went well, they're supposed to have a site planned in by the... DECD does pretty much all the legwork on it. They were getting the permit ready. It was going to be turned in at the end of today. I didn't hear if it did get turned in. But if everything went well, maybe mid to end of next week for getting it in. And in terms of where the site is, there's some criteria on where you can put these rain gardens in per the grant. We did look at the Town Hall complex. However, there's dry wells in place there. It didn't make sense there, whereas we don't have those in place at the DHS Building.
And most importantly, it won't represent any cost to the town, and I know we'll be working with some of our local students when it comes time to actually garden. So looking forward to seeing the project complete and looking forward to more rain gardens in town. But I think that's all.
Thank you.
And happy Veterans Day to all of our vets here in town.
Counselor Parker.
Excuse me. Attended the Groton Community Center opening, which was very nice and well-attended. It's a great opportunity. A couple of people told me, hey, it's a good place for kids to be able to go to and have a safe place to hang out. Attended the City of Groton Municipal Building Sub-Vets Ceremony for the veterans, and thank you all for your service. And that was it.
All right. Counselor Franko.
I also attended the grand opening at the Groton's new community center, where Felicia Stevens was recognized for dedicating over 300 hours of painting, creating customized art and murals. And I would encourage anybody in the town, if you haven't stopped by, to stop in. I'm sure they'll allow you to go take a tour and walk around and see everything that's there. It's located in the old Fitch Junior Building next door to the Town Hall. That's it.
Counselor Heath.
Well, I saved two from last week, so I have more than you for a change. So I attended band competitions hosted by Fitch High School with RTM member Portia Bordelon and also Nick Keppel, the probate judge. And then just about two weeks ago, I attended a PTO trivia night hosted by West Side Middle School of PTO, which was great fun. And then on Sunday, we attended the Sub-Vets Memorial in the city, as well as placing flowers at the Veterans Memorial here by the public library. I also received email communication, which you've already mentioned, and that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Obray.
Well, you should be happy to know that real estate's humming along, so I've been kind of busy with that. But I did have a very nice meeting with John Reiner, where we reviewed the blight ordinance that's being worked on right now, and we came up with some ideas for some additional things that we could be doing on it. So it was a very productive meeting.
Counselor Atwater.
Last Friday, I attended the dedication at the high school for William Pratt, who was the Marine who had been killed in the Beirut bombing. And yesterday, I toured or walked or hobbled, I guess, because I hurt my knee. The Sheep Farm South that we are considering this evening, beautiful piece of property. And this morning, I attended the CCM meeting on local economic analysis.
Counselor Schmidt.
I had a meeting with John Reiner, the Department Head of Planning, and I had a meeting about the TIF regulations and how TIF can accommodate economic development for Groton. Very positive.
I have no report for you today.
No report? I have one other thing I forgot to mention, and it's kind of good news. Mr. Burt and I, Mr. Schneider, received correspondence from a gentleman and his two people that live on High Street and Mystic, in praise of Public Works and the great job they did on High Street. They were very happy with the interaction between the Historic District and the Public Works Department in making everything happen in a smooth manner and with very good results. So it's always nice to get those letters, too. You get both sides. So we like to hear from our constituents on both sides of the issue. Okay, so we are on approval of the minutes. This is page two. Counselor Baumgartner.
I'll make a motion that the minutes of the Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting of October 23rd, 2018, are hereby accepted and approved, so moved.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion on the minutes of October 23rd? I believe there were a couple typos. Page eight, 5E, right before the motion, I believe it should read reimbursement. Page 10, 5J, I believe it should read management. Anybody else have anything of substance?
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Perry.
On page 11, there is a vote listed in which it indicates that all councilors voted yes. This was the resolution authorizing a capital reserve appropriation of $330,000 for the design and construction of, for the installation of an uninterrupted power supply at the police station. The vote report indicates that everyone voted yes, but I voted no.
Okay. If you're looking, page 11 has the vote for...
Pardon me, page 13.
Page 13. Okay, let me check it up. Uninterrupted power source. Okay, so that is... I'm stating everything clearly because the assistants and the manager will be viewing this and going through. So we're on item 5M, 2018, 433, and you're indicating that the vote should have Counselors of Perry as a no?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's clear enough for Ms. Hilton?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further adjustments to the minute. We will vote. All those in favor of the October 23rd minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are at the New Business, 5A, 2018, 493, Groton Open Space Association. So would you like to make the motion so we can have discussion, please?
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to endorse Groton Open Space Association's grant application for land acquisition under Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program. I so move.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Baumgartner. And do we have members of Groton Open Space Association that would like to come up to the table and introduce the item for us, please? If you could make sure you speak into the microphone, that way your audio is captured for the tape, please, and just introduce yourselves. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Olivier, residing at 75 Hemlock Road in Groton, Connecticut. I'm the Treasurer of Groton Open Space Association, and I'm here with the current Vice President and organization founder Sidney Van Sant and Director Jamie Denzmore. We are here to represent the organization known as GOSSA and its request to the Town Council for positive endorsement of GOSSA's grant application for Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant. GOSSA was founded in 1967 and incorporated as a Connecticut non-stock corporation in 1996. GOSSA is recognized by the Internal Revenue Service as tax-exempt under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code. GOSSA is here before you today to seek the Town Council's endorsement of our grant application, which will facilitate the purchase of a 104-acre set of properties located just north of US Route 1, across the road from the proposed new middle school, west of Flanders Road, and east and southeast of GOSSA-held property known as the Sheep Farm on Hazel Nut Hill. We have executed a purchase-and-sale agreement with the present owners. Town Council endorsement of our grant application is required for us to proceed with the grant application process, which has a 7 February 2019 deadline for this application cycle, which we are trying to meet. You have before you a more detailed package that describes the property, its potential value, both environmental and economic, and letters of support, which include one from the Town of Groton Conservation Commission. GOSSA requests your favorable consideration of our grant application, and we're standing by for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We have quite a bit of information that was included in our packet, and Counselor Obray, you said these came from Ms. Van Sant for us to take a look at? Is that what these were? Okay. And are these for the record? Should I give them... Okay. I'll pass these down if you'd like to take a look at these, and I just need them back to submit for minutes. So do any councilors have questions for the members of GOSSA? Counselors of Perry, and then Atwater.
Have you checked, have you discussed this plan with the Town Planning Department?
Mr. Burt has a response for you.
The Planning Department, first of all, is staffed to the Conservation Commission. I sent it to John Reiner and Deb Jones for review. Conservation Commission's the one that did the formal review, but I did speak with John and Deb about it, and they were generally supportive. They were supportive.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Atwater.
I have a question. It's on page 21 of our packet, and I know it was in the information that you provided us. It has to do with the land values, and it says gross assessed value, $2,0570 for one parcel and so forth. And in speaking with Whitney Adams yesterday, my understanding is that that's the tax, that it's not the gross assessed value. Is that...
Excuse me, if you wish to speak, you need to come forward. Ms. Van Sant, is this someone from the organization that you wish to speak on your behalf?
Yes.
Please, please come up and use the microphone.
Excuse me, I'm Marie Goldson.
Thank you.
I live on 188 Crossman's Drive, and my husband did part of this research. And that's the gross assessment that's listed for the town, through the town, but it's our understanding that then you multiply that gross assessment by the mill rate to get the tax. So the tax for all of it is about $500. If you take the $19,000, and then you... Because that's a gross assessed value, and then you multiply it times the mill rate.
Mr. Burt, go ahead.
You would divide it by the thousand, is my understanding, and then times it by the...
So what is, just in general, what would be the assessed value, what would be the value to the town of all this property?
It's in your packet, about $19,000. I don't know. And it's about...
That's the value of the property.
...a parcel sits in there, and then you multiply that times...
The point 023, or whatever the mill rate, not positive the mill rate. So it comes out to about $500 tax.
You take the gross assessed, you divide it by 1,000, and then times it by the mill rate, which would come out to about $500, right?
That's only because it's a Forest-designated property currently.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say...
It's a Forest-designated property, PA 490 designation, so that's why the reduced assessed value of the current property...
Okay, it is under Forest...
Correct. And GOSSA would obviously be tax-exempt, so really the assessed value doesn't have any direct applicability.
Okay, because it just seemed like...
That's only because it's currently being used as Forest property.
Because 104 acres at $19,000, I would have bought it myself.
Counselor Obray, did you want to chime in on this?
I kind of understand what you're saying, but I think that this is misleading, because this property cannot be this value. It would be an absolute impossibility. Now, you might have something because it's taxed a different way right now, but that's not a true value of that property.
Yes, ma'am. Certainly, we have to have the property appraised to support our grant application, and certainly the appraised value would be substantially higher than that value that's the town assessment for tax purposes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that point.
And in order to apply for a grant, we need two appraisals, outside appraisals, to send up with our application.
Thank you. Counselor Franco.
So my question is, is this land economically development viable? And I think I'd like to ask that, Mr. Burt.
In speaking with the Planning Department, they said, you know, it's got some development value, but it's not an outstanding property for development. It's got challenges. Yeah, could you put something on there? Yes, but you're not going to get anything great on there, they said. They thought this was an appropriate use for the property, as well as the Conservation Commission thought the same thing. It fits in with plans of the town.
Thank you. Hold on one second, please. If anybody else who hasn't spoken once yet wished to speak before we go back, for Counselor Baumgartner, and then Obray.
It's good to see you all. My question's about the recreational opportunity...
My question's about the recreational opportunities that will come with this open space acquisition. Could you go into a little bit more detail?
So the past couple of years, I probably don't even need a microphone, but the past couple of years, we've been working with Parks and Rec on getting more kids out on our property in the summer. We've sponsored a couple of scholarships. In this upcoming year, we're going to be doing sponsors for buses. We had quite a good turnout last year. We brought them out to the Sheep Farm, and, well, Sheep Farm North, which is what it will be called. And then we're also working with the Town Parks and Rec Department to build a new bridge across a town property that we pledged to help out with to improve access to town open space near Fishtown Road. In addition to that, we're very active in Groton Public School Systems, the science, technology, engineering, and math events. But ultimately, what we're trying to do is get more kids outdoors, which I think is something that, you know, I know that kids need these days, and it's in our mission to get more children and families out into nature and exposed to local open space options. And I think this property, because it's connected to our Barrett family property, it's connected to the Sheep Farm, is just a linking greenbelt property that I think we should have.
And then maybe one or two points on the ecological importance of the site?
The most important thing about the site is the water. Fort Hillbrook begins, the headwaters are in a giant marsh owned by the Town of Groton just north of the dump, and it runs down through the Sheep Farm, through Sheep Farm South, we hope, and then runs into Mumper Cove. And tonight, this very minute, there's a hearing at Avery Point on preserving Long Island Sound. The western end was dead for so long, and they've been clearing it up, helping to clear it up, but when you see in the summer beaches are closed, why are beaches closed? Because of runoff. And so because we have rock ledge on the east side and rock ledge on the west side, which is Sheep Farm, if you've ever been at the top, it's solid rock. Because that's all runoff, if you put any impervious surface on there, it's all going to runoff. And during, you should get the Planning Commission map of the March 2010 storm, and the damage that happened, the water, amount of water that came down to where the library is was huge. And so to protect this land from impervious surface, you're protecting Fort Hillbrook and Long Island Sound.
Thank you.
Back to Counselor Obray, please.
I just want to disagree with you just a little bit. At one time, there was an approved condo project up there, 55 and older. So there is a good use for that property. I'm not adverse to what we're talking about tonight, but I don't want it slanted. I put those lots together originally for a condo project, and it would have been very good for this town to have it. So I just think we have to be... I'm the historian. I'm just bringing you up to speed.
It wasn't my review.
That's right.
Counselor Heath.
As I understand it, the Conservation Commission has already basically approved this, or they recommended it. It's actually, I've been attending their meetings regarding plastic pollution, and after they finish discussing that, they end up going into linking up these various plots of land that are isolated and following the water streams, and this is one of them that they've identified. It's on their maps. It's in the conservation plan in addition to that. And it's also downstream from the dump, the landfill, which is no longer in use. So I know that you've tested the water on the surface, but have you tested the water, the groundwater underneath?
Our scientists, in 2010, when we were trying to protect the Sheep Farm, they were doing all manner of testing, and one of the things that they were doing is what is growing in the water there, and if that is growing, it means the water is pure. And so the water coming down from up there, that stream runs to the west of the dump, and it has been tested down right just north of the waterfall, and it has been tested, had been tested pure. And so I would say that that is a good sense of what the quality of the water is.
Okay. Yeah, so basically, keeping the property open from a scientific point of view would be advisable, not advisable, in regards to the dump, if there is anything that's seeping through there?
Well, the worst thing that could happen to that stream is for impervious surface to come in there. Right now, we've cut a trail, which is the old wood road that goes down to where the waterfall is, that our town manager just went to see a day or so ago. And so that will be open for recreation, and it's a through path for one of, Mr. Atwater, to go from his house all the way down through, crossing over Fort Hillbrook, but it's really the health of the book that's the most important, and it adds to the Long Island Sound.
Well, I think I just would like to point out that GOSSA has done tremendous things for this town of Groton, and we're very fortunate to have an open space agency like this that maintains the property so beautifully and opens it up to the public so that everybody's able to enjoy these beautiful spots and take advantage of them, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. And I'm pleased to see that you're working in conjunction with our Parks Department, and the Parks Department is supportive of the things you're doing, and you're working hand-in-hand for the benefit of the whole community in addition to preserving the natural environment. You're doing hands-on things for our citizens, and in particular, the kids, so I think it's great that you're sponsoring those summertime programs for the children. Is there any further discussion?
Just have one question.
Counselor Franco.
So I just want to clarify on the tax situation. So when you came up with a $500 amount, is this the amount that we're actually collecting currently?
Yes. Just to kind of check to see, I looked at the first property on our Finance Department tax bill. It was like $76.15 tax bill for that first piece, so yeah, it's pretty low.
So it's a current number of what we're actually...
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion on the floor, as it reads on page 18, to recommend a resolution to endorse the GOSSA grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eight in favor, one opposed, Obray? Any abstentions? Sorry, I should have called the first. Eight in favor, one opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you very much. Head over to UConn now. All right, we are at the 5B, and this is presentation by Great Blue, and there's no formal action needed. The introductory comments are on page 36 in your packet. It's 2018, 448, Great Blue Presentation of Recreation Assessment Study, and Mr. Barry is with us this evening. Thank you all for coming out.
Good evening. Mark Barry, Director of Parks and Recreation, and to my left is Rachel Mitchell from Great Blue. This study was conducted through a cooperative effort between the Planning and Design or Development Services Department and the Parks and Recreation Department. The goal was to develop a strategic and physically responsible plan through a community survey to better understand the current value of recreational, of community events and recreational facilities. This survey complements what Great Blue did for the Planning Department back in 2016. The results of that study showed that the services provided by the Parks and Recreation Department significantly impacted the quality of place in Groton. So the results from this survey will be used to assist the department in community event planning, recreational facility planning, and development. Both of these initiatives will help position Groton to be competitive in capturing some of the economic growth in this region in the coming years. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Rachel.
Hi, my name is Rachel Mitchell. You can hear me okay. I'm thinking, from Great Blue Research. So I'll just start right in with just giving you a brief overview of the project that we did. Again, as Mark said, we were commissioned by the Town of Groton to assess respondents' idea or perception of value of various recreation... idea or perception of value of various recreational events and recreational facilities and amenities in the town of Groton. Those people that were respondents, I'll just give you a little background as to who that sample was. We pulled from a random sample of registered voters, which were residents of Groton, and a sample of registered voters from the various towns, surrounding towns, Stonington, Leadyard, and New London. We completed approximately, or exactly, 612 surveys, made up of 403 Groton residents and 100 spread out over Leadyard, Stonington, and New London. We also collected 109 online surveys through a URL link that was on your Groton website. So we worked within a margin of error of 3.9% with a 95% confidence interval. And I'll move on from there with approximately about 45 questions that were asked to all respondents. We had the goal of, again, assessing the value of various recreational events, programs, and facilities and amenities.
This is in your packet, by the way, if you wanted to follow along. She is on page 42 right now, Ms. Mitchell, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I did move up a little bit just so that we could get through some of the pieces. So I focused on, we focused on areas of investigation, attendance, and participation and utilization of both events, programs, and facilities. And then asked what people had as perceived value of those events, perceived values of those facilities and amenities, and then gauged their interest in expanding or adding on to both the facilities or adding on to the events that you offer within the town of Groton. We also wanted to get an idea of people's preferred ideas of communication. I won't cover that today, I'm going to focus on those first ones that we talked about. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of the demographics that came out of it, about 50% of the respondents were reported to be under the age of 55, with 16.9% living outside of the Groton area. With 49.8% of respondents stating that they were over the age of 55, with 20% of those living outside of the Groton area. One-third of those, or just a little over one-third of those respondents reported that they were retired. Another third responded that they lived in the town of Groton for 25 years or more, with a smaller percentage saying that they lived in the town of Groton from approximately one year to less than five years. We also were able to capture about 12% of active military and reserve respondents. And one of the highlights there that I just wanted to notify you of was that 60, just over 65% of respondents reported that they did not have children under the age of 18 living in their home. And then just touching on about the reason why people stay in the area of Groton, its employment opportunities, they were born here, and location. Some of the reasons that they might consider moving outside of Groton were high taxes, employment opportunities, and military-related issues or challenges. If you do have questions as I move through, I'm happy to answer them, or I can just wait till the end. I'm just looking at the usage of Groton facilities. This was capturing all recreational services, those are both amenities and participation. So at least some of these reported that they utilized Groton's recreational services at least one time a week. And you can see that that's just about 50% of the respondents. And then about 30% of those living outside of Groton used recreational services, about 30% reported one time a week. Then capturing the value. Looking at this chart, I just want to explain that we looked at the combined value of respondents reported, a combined value of very valuable and somewhat valuable. And you can see that your summer events captured the highest value from respondents, your Ridswald Sail Fest, your Esker Point Summer Concerts, and your Fourth of July Parade. You'll see that the Senior Center social events are listed third, and that's when we base it just on very valuable responses from respondents. Notably, even though that received a very high rate of very valuable, they weren't as well-attended as some of the other events around the Fourth of July. In participation in recreational events, as you can see, again, your top three were across mirroring pretty much what was across, captured in terms of value. And that was for both Groton area residents and also non-Groton residents. And I can hold any of this there if anybody wants me to be able to hold it, so you can take a look. And then just recreational events attended by age. Again, your top three were the Fourth of July Parade, your fireworks and concert, and your summer concerts. They tended to capture across the broad ranges of ages within the survey. And then you had your Fall Festival and Holiday Lights, which also were ranked pretty high in value and attendance. But again, you don't see the Senior Center events there in terms of capturing a high level of attendance. And then in terms of value placed on Groton recreational amenities, you can see that playground, parks, and beaches, and athletic fields were the top three, with a focus on parks and playgrounds and beaches, with the combined value of very valuable and somewhat valuable. And then just in terms of usage, your top three are now beaches and parks. And hiking trails were highly utilized by both Groton area residents and non-Groton residents. One thing to note here also is that the parks and rac, parks and beaches were also those amenities that Groton residents also used outside of, tended to go outside of Groton to use also. And I also wanted to point out that the basketball courts were utilized by a high level of those under the age of 46. Somebody's smiling, I'm saying that's surprising. And then just touching on interest and where to expand, again, looking at great deal of interest, you had your top three being the athletic field complex, the community center, and the aquatic center. I did want to just stop here for a moment and just bring out some of the findings that are not captured here on the screen in terms of, I apologize for a minute, the age group for that. Just in terms of specifically your aquatic center, those that reported saying that they had a great deal of interest in expanding on that or adding to that, 53.7% of those respondents reported to be within the ages of 18 and 55. That's higher than the other two, which the athletic complex showed 45.8% reported to be 18 to 55 years of age. And for the community center, 43% reported to be ages 18 to 55. I point that out just as you make decisions. You might, you'll be wanting to think about what age group you want to be attracting or retaining in the town of Groton. And then interest in future events, I circled the bottom two because we looked at the combined valuable scores, or value scores, which the highest were holiday events and cultural events, with food festivals coming in third. When you only look at the very valuable scores, you can see that that kind of changes things up a little bit. And then just things to think about for the future. We do recommend that you continue with your Fourth of July celebrations and events, your parade, your concert, and then also continuing your summer program concerts. It does appear that your value is placed on things that occur during the warmer weather in summer months, and they're well-attended, which I am thinking many of you are aware of that. And then also just taking a look at the Senior Center, although that received very valuable scores, they're not well-attended. It may require some further investigation to see what types of events or programs the Senior Center is looking for in order to boost their attendance for that. And also, we do recommend, in terms of the community center, was, had such a high value rating also, to look at how some of the cultural events and holidays events can be planned for the community center to drive some attendance there and some utilization of that center. And you could combine that with food festivals or food trucks, because they're also rated pretty highly. And just in terms of additions and expansions, I did touch on the top three and wanted to point out the difference in age groups, so that you could determine which ones to move for. But just based on the values alone, expansions of the athletic complex and the community center were the highest valued. But again, the aquatic received the highest level of that age group of 18 to 55 seeing value there. And the BMX pump track received just over 53% voted that they were not interested in pursuing any type of expansion for that facility. Now, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. We have Council Heath first.
For the road races, I'm envisioning the Grand Prix. So is it just jogging, or are there other road races that were noted in here?
In terms of the BMX, are you talking about? I'm sorry.
Just said, on page 45, it's slide number nine. We've got road races with 48.4% very valuable, 32.4% somewhat valuable.
Do you mean things like the Tarzan Brown? Or, yeah, the 5Ks, I assume?
Oh, in terms of road races?
Yeah, what is a road race?
Oh, right, those road races would be a 5K, a 10K.
No Grand Prix.
No drug races.
Grand Prix to Nellie. We used to have a racetrack, a horse track down where Burroughs, Fillers, Paquana Clings is. Yes, Council Franco.
So I'd like to take, so with a Senior Center, you're saying the respondents, which were, the majority of them were seniors, right?
Yes.
They highly value the Senior Center, but then they're, it's underutilized.
Correct.
So where does, where does, where do they take this information and go forward? I mean, other than just trying to change up what activities they're having, is that what you're suggesting?
My suggestion is to, is to investigate further to find out what types of activities or programs would bring in the attendance. And it could also be...
Sorry, I was going to say, I think one of the things you need to consider is the percentage of seniors that, you know, utilize the Senior Center. I mean, it's a much smaller percentage than the entire community of Groton. So I think just by the fact that it's serving a smaller group, you're going to have less numbers participating in the events. Does that make sense?
Sort of. But the respondents in this survey, they were a majority of seniors, right?
Yes. It was a greater percentage of seniors.
Okay. So with all the data combined, how are you going to go, how should we proceed forward? Or how should you proceed forward, actually? How, what are you going to do with all the data and?
Yeah, and this is just kind of an executive summary of all the data. There's a lot of drilling down that needs to be done. But, you know, looking through this is going to help us determine, you know, in which direction we move forward. That was the intent of this, of doing this project. And part of that will be our community outreach coordinator, you know, taking a look at this and analyzing what we need to do in order to increase participation, increase program retention, and things like that.
Right. Thank you.
When I'm looking at the pie chart on 55, it looks like if you go 55 and up, it's only, works out to be about 44%. So it's not really a majority, it might be to plurality, but it's not a majority of the respondents?
No, it is not. The goal of, one of the parameters that was put on was to have at least 50% under the age of 55.
Right.
So, and the rest would be above that.
Right. Council Atwater.
I just have a question, say, with the Senior Center, I guess it would apply to other things. How do you determine whether it's underutilized or overutilized or whatever? Is there some way of measuring expectation or something?
I would, I would say that it would require further investigation to see if people feel it's underutilized. I don't think the mayor numbers here, this just was a value and what they attended for what's been offered. So I, you would have to further investigate to find out if they feel it's underutilized, if you're actually getting the population that you want in to the Senior Center.
And one of the things that the Senior Center has been doing is we've added, they've added some new special events to, specifically, they, they're now doing the chili cook-off, they did the baker's battle. So they've added some things that are targeted for the entire community. And I think there's probably a perception issue, like, oh, it's at the Senior Center, it must be just for seniors. So I think, you know, that's part of the challenge that we face. And by opening up these events to include the entire community, I think that's going to help break down, I mean, and that's been one of our goals, is to try to break down that perception. And it's not unique to Groton, it's something that senior centers across the country face just by, you know, the nature of the name of it, you know, no one wants to be considered a senior. You know, I have a membership to the fitness center. I don't consider myself a senior, but I do qualify to participate. So, you know, I, I struggle with the fact that, although my daughter would say I'm a senior, but anyway, you know, so I, I think the Senior Center is taking steps to maximize utilization.
We've got Supperi, Bumgardner, Overy, and then Heath.
Another thing I would suggest to you, as you consider the lower utilization level, you multiply that by the value of that to the people who are participating in its usage. I think as people grow older, their horizons constrict. The things that they can do, the places they can go are less and less. And the environment at the Senior Center is such that these people have a place to go, and they can participate in various activities that are running there. So the value to them is greater than, say, the value of a ball field to an 18-year-old, because they can do so many things. But the seniors, the ones that are coming close to the end of their existence, don't have much left. And if we have a place for them to enjoy, and that is a safe environment, and there are activities for them, I think the value of those activities increase, even though it's serving a fewer number of people.
Okay, we have Council Bumgardner, Council Overy, and then back to Council Heath, unless someone else wants to jump in.
Thank you, Mayor. And you're right, does the Rec Department have the bandwidth or capacity to, you know, if need be to, you know, do you have the resources to support an increase in programming that would be associated with, say, some of these new facilities, like an aquatic center? And if not, what would the town need to do to get to that point in the next few years?
Well, I think we took a big step a couple of months ago when we moved into the community center. And, you know, we've got more square footage. It's centrally located in the community, which I think is a great asset. And, you know, hopefully, the administrative part of Parks and Recreation, you know, we're out at Spicer House now, hopefully, we can, at some point in the near future, move closer, or, I'm sorry, move into that space. I think operationally, that just makes it much more sense. And having staff there, you know, from 6:30 in the morning until the, until programs get done in the evening, I think lends itself to more opportunities. And, you know, there's some unused space in that building, and I think there's some more opportunities. There's an auditorium that's sitting dormant, I think there's a lot of opportunities there. You know, we've been approached by a couple of different communities. You know, we've been approached by a couple of different community organizations about reopening that. And I think you all will be seeing some proposed plans for that as we go through the budget process. As far as the aquatic center, you know, we have put money in the budget for a feasibility study. I think it was in the budget when I got here six years ago, and every year it gets kicked down the road. When we did, in two thousand and nine, when we did a comprehensive master plan, you know, one of the top facilities that was identified in this plan was, was an aquatic center. And, you know, this feasibility, the next step is really a feasibility study. Like, okay, everybody says they want an aquatic center, but no one's really defined, you know, somebody that's seventy-five, their idea of what they want in an aquatic facility is much different than someone that's, you know, seven and a half years old. So really, the next step would be to figure out what, what it is really that people want. And then, you know, you gotta look at the numbers and say, you know, does it make sense? So I can't, I'm not gonna sit here and say, yes, we could open up an aquatics facility and not increase the staff. I mean, that would just be unrealistic. But it really depend, would depend on what, you know, if we did a private-public partnership or, you know, what type of facility that would come about from this feasibility.
Thank you. So we have, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes.
So we have Councilor Overy, Councilor Heed, and then I wanted to say something.
I just wanna say, overall, I think you do an excellent job. I know how hard you try, and you've got a great staff. I love them to death. I'm just wondering if, in the course of this and trying to look at different things, maybe we should think about changing the name. I mean, I know it was built for the seniors and it's there for the seniors, but it would probably be kinda simple to do something like Senior and Event Center. And then it would open people to thoughts of, oh, I wonder what's really going on in there. So, for what it's worth, it might be something to think about.
I would agree. I think changing the name of that facility would positively impact people's perception and, and also the use. I, you know, there's people that eighty-five, that are eighty-five that say, well, I'm not going there because it's a senior center and, you know, I'm not quite a senior. So...
I don't go there.
Yeah. Well, I admit it, I do, so.
But maybe you can think about that.
Sure.
Councilor Heed?
I also aspire to be a senior, just like you, so I'm not quite there. But I've attended several events, and they're all, they all seem to be relatively well-attended, meaning the room is full of people. But I know that there are a lot of seniors in town who may not be going. But just to echo Councilor Zepari's comments, we might need to look into why older people's horizons are shrinking and how we could help them to get there. I know that we have a transportation, like a bus. I'm not sure how it schedules or how any of that works. Not familiar with that, but I'd encourage you to definitely look into that. And then, I think you make an interesting point on the aquatic center, where you have different interests based on age. One of the things that I've noticed, because I've lived in a lot of different communities, if you wanna attract younger people, specifically younger families with children, a pool is great, you know, in the summertime. But the other thing that's really nice is, especially for the younger kids, is like a water park, where you have like the little teapot thing that tips over on them, gets them all wet, things that come up through the ground.
Right.
Splash pads.
Yes, exactly. And then, I've seen them, like, in Reston, Virginia, they have one that's in the middle of a development with restaurants, ice cream shops, all kinds of things, mixed-use development with condos, and people drive for miles to go there with their kids. It brings them in, and it's an exciting place to raise a family, I'm told. So, you know, definitely, a lot of, there are a lot of things that I think your study suggests. But what other things besides this would you want to do? Maybe, for example, speak about road races, but if you hosted events that were part-road, part-going through some of our trails, so that it's off-road, on-road, you know, what else would attract people to wanna come to Groton and stay here? Because I think that, that's what you're reaching for in your study.
Right.
Right?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't sure what your question was.
So, you know, well, I started with things that I've seen that attract people, like different kinds of water parks. So you've mentioned four or five ideas in here that you used in your poll. So are you able to derive from that other, like, maybe a BMX, an expanded BMX park is not what we need, but maybe, I think in New London, they're doing a skating, skateboard kind of a park? So are these things that might fit into this? You know what I mean?
Right, other things that they might have mentioned that they wanted to see.
Exactly.
Yes.
Or that you could say, well, they want an aquatic center, but maybe instead of a pool, they want a water park.
We did leave space for open ends. A water park did not come up. And I'm, I'm not sure if they're in the report that you have, that we captured some of the percentages of what people responded to for other programs or other activities that they wanted to see outside of what was listed. We did try to, what we did was we categorized them by age group, or it was kids, it was senior-related. That might be at the beginning of the report in the key findings. I don't have that in front of me, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
Did you have further questions?
And those findings might help with kind of directing some of the things that came up, just as an open end at the end of the survey.
Councilor Parker, did you have something you wanted to add?
So this is not the full report? This is only a portion of?
This presentation here is, is just a high-level overview, executive summary of it. And then there was a full report that was given to Mark Prior.
Can we see that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that might clarify some of our questions that we may have.
Sure.
I just wanted to say this. I hope that the department will use these findings to help guide their future plans. And I also wanted to comment on what you were talking about with the Fitch Building. And I really hope we can get the offices, the Parks and Rec offices moved there. And to take it one step further, I would also love to see voter registration go in there and human services go into the Fitch Building. So it truly would be more like a community center where the general public could go there and, you know, they could have all the services that they could possibly need as far as the community. So I hope that's something that we can pursue in the future. I know there are some issues with the infrastructure as far as wiring and so forth, to be able to accommodate the computer requirements for all the different departments. But hopefully, that can be looked at when we're moving forward with CIPs. I'm trying to think who hasn't talked yet. Councilor Schmidt hasn't spoken yet. Anything you might add?
No, I just wanna echo what Councilor Zepari said. I think that as you get into the older group, you find people with greater inabilities and, and different capacities, and this may be why they can't participate as, as much as they would like to.
And back to Councilor Parker.
I'll ask later.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a different, I'll, I'll ask later.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilor Overy?
Did you ask any questions about, I don't know if it would be appropriate or not, probably that's another thing, but I'm thinking, the transportation to the senior center is excellent. So, I don't know how I put it into this, so. I'll just say that I think the transportation is excellent. You really work at getting people there that do need assistance.
Any other councilors? Okay, so there's no formal action required, so we thank you for coming out and for presenting this. And is there anything else you wanted to add, sir?
No, I will make sure that you get the full copy of the report.
Excellent. It can be, can you email or?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's great, that we don't have to kill trees.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, so we are on to item five C, which is on page fifty-seven. And this is item twenty-eighteen dash three-eight-one, Groton Twenty-Twenty Plan Construction Goals. And we don't have a resolution at this point because this is a discussion item right now. We can make the resolution if we come to a consensus this evening. So Mr. Schneider, would you like to introduce, and you missed the comment we had before. Did you see the letter we got?
Oh, absolutely.
Very nice.
That was very nice. The project came out perfect in our words, and a crew really did an excellent job out there of, of even keeping to the character of the street by the granite curbing that we didn't remove, we reset, the hitching posts, all that stuff that came out really nice, looks good.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you. With me tonight is Mark Berry, who's...
[laughing].
I'm looking around, I don't see half my crew here. With me tonight is two gentlemen from Arcadis, which is our project managers for the thing. And Brian is to my right, and I'm embarrassed because I forgot his last name already. Oblan, Brian Oblan. I'm bad with names. To my left is Jack Buckus. So what I'd like to do is maybe have Brian give the council a briefing, an update on what he has. He's, he's been with the firm for several years, and he's worked through MBE, WBE issues. So let me turn it over to Brian.
Good evening, actually. Thank you very much. I'm sorry if I'm a little scratchy. I think I'm a tad bit under the weather today. So I, I know that there was some, some questions that were, you know, around the project and the concern of workers and, and whatnot. So the project itself will, will have to be, you know, it's a state-funded project, so therefore, there are requirements that need to be met. And I know there was concerns about whether or not, you know, certain things were gonna be met and workers were gonna be involved and whatnot. So what I can tell you is CHRO will, will preside over a portion of the project in regards to, you know, who works at the project and the requirements are by statute, right? So twenty-five percent of, of workers, excuse me, will have to be DAS pre-certified. And so what that means is that there is the, you know, they have to go to DAS Department of Administrative Services in the state of Connecticut and apply for this, for, for that, that approval of being a, a small business, right? And then of that twenty-five percent, the requirement of the project is that there are six and a, six and a quarter percent of the twenty-five has to be women, minorities, or persons with disabilities. So if that kinda gives you a general overview of what's required, sort of, you know, by law and by statute, and that, that requirement is, is monitored throughout the process of the project. So certified payroll is really the, is really the driving force there. That's, that's gone over and monitored to make sure that those percentages are being met. There's also a compliance plan that needs to be initially set up on the onset of the contract. So when the subcontractors are, when all the subcontracts are let to, to build the project, what will happen is, is they have to submit a plan to CHR and have it approved. There's also withholding of their, of additional retainage to ensure that they're motivated and, and interested in being compliant and making sure that these percentages are, are met along the way. I'm not exactly, I don't know if there's more specific question that you'd like to address, or?
Maybe, there's two things. CHRO is the Connecticut...
It's a, yeah, it's a Connecticut Human, Human Rights and Opportunities, run by, well, it's a whole group of people. You know, obviously, in this project, we'll probably deal with Alvin Bingham in regards to compliance. He is generally in oversight of projects that are larger than five hundred thousand dollars.
Percentage of roughly a dollar?
Percentage of?
Sorry, the dollar value for the...
Well, it's a, the number of construction is...
Our construction budget for the middle school is approximately seventy million dollars. So twenty-five percent of that seventy million would be subcontracted or performed by small business entities. Then, as Brian said, twenty-five percent of that twenty-five percent, or six and a quarter percent of the seventy million, would be executed by minority-owned, women-owned, or disability-owned businesses. And again, as, the, the hinge there is that all of these entities must be certified as such by the Department of Administrative Services. Any public construction dollars can, can, the state requires that entities that are constructing with state construction dollars must go through the DAS process, which looks at the financial viability of the firm's bonding capacity, et cetera. So there is that, that level of quality control that the, that the contractors coming onto the project will have certain, certain stability and qualifications to get it done.
May I ask for some qualification?
Excuse me, one second, Councilor Zepari. I, I wanted to just say one other thing that's included in the state requirements. The preference given to U.S. citizens who continuously for three months have been residents of the labor market area, as established by the Labor Commissioner. So the Labor Commissioner determines that preference is given to the people in the labor market, and then preference to citizens of that county, then to citizens of that state. So that is also in conjunction, when you're doing a state project, not only the minimum twenty-five percent, things that you've already outlined, but the local residents as well. And our labor market, I believe, is Norwich, New London, correct? Okay, thank you. Councilor Zepari?
I'm confused because, your name again, sir?
My name is Brian Oblan.
Brian, Brian said that the requirement is to have six and a quarter percent of the twenty-five percent be minorities or disabled or women, whereas you, sir, said it was six and a quarter percent of the entire project.
Twenty-five percent of the twenty-five percent, small business component, calculates to six and a quarter percent of, of the construction value.
If it's helpful.
Okay.
We said it in slightly different ways.
Okay. If it's helpful, I can, I can read it right, right from...
No, no, I, I'm happy, I understand what you're saying now. I just wanted to have that clear.
Sure.
And to, to the mayor's point, there are two la, two layers in this. We're talking at this point about the contracting level, and then there is the further layer of the actual labor that is implementing the work.
Mr. Schneider, did you want to say anything before we open up to questions?
I was just gonna add one other thing. I know the council is, had some questions on, you know, how to get the, the local contractors, whether that be from the town or the surrounding area involved in this. And there could be, as such as talking with these gentlemen here and with our construction manager, is that we could have the, which is ONG, we could have ONG do outreach before it goes out to bid and when it's out to bid, to outreach to people, outreach to contractors, have a meeting to, to, to help them, not fill out the forms themselves, but to answer questions. So there could be an outreach component. There may be a small business in the town of Groton, a small, a tile setter, a contractor, carpenter, or, or anything in any of the trades, as a small business, and he just knows, he just needs to know where, or they need to know where. He or she needs to know where to fill out the forms, how to get DAS certified. And we could have ONG do an outreach. We could schedule several meetings in the surrounding area here. It could be at, you know, Town Hall, could be at the senior center, could be someplace else, to see if, to see, to see if there is any interest in these people signing up through the state. So sometimes, if a person works long hours during the day, they have to go home and do billing and everything else, and just making out another form with the state is just, it's, 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 you look at the form and you have more questions than what the form really is asking you. So that will be one of the ways that we can get outreach. As for determining where the workers have or are living, it's really after the fact. The certified payrolls will list where they live, so we could then report back on if the goals are, are being met. They are goals, you strive to, you know, have local workers in that here, but it, 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 it really is goals. So one, to get more information out there, maybe getting more people signed up, would be is having ONG for all of the schools. We do the middle school now, is actually have those outreach sessions and advertise them, and, and see if that brings any more people up, up to the table, at least about the project, and how they would, could get certified through the state.
One of the things, when I attended the naval and maritime consortium launch, there was a, I met a woman, I was a program manager for the Women's Business Development Council, and I indicated to her that we were interested in being able to reach women contractors to work on this job. And she said she was gonna look into some things and get back to me. So I have her name also, I can share with you, gentlemen, when you're ready for that.
So just one other thing I, I wanted to add, there, there's two components which, which are pretty important, and, and I think there's... important, and I think is going to be helpful for the local people in town and the folks that are trying to run their businesses. So, and a lot of this is through the outreach, and we have other ideas and things that still have to be developed yet. But the moral of it is all is that DAS has sessions that you can go to that is offered for help to fill out and find out how to not only be part of the process, but also to come down and have a little session, so you have sort of that guiding hand to help you through the process. Additionally, CHRO, once a month, puts on, I'll call it a clinic, and if, once they are pre-certified, making a compliant plan, which is required by CHRO, is aided by them. So, you know, it's very, it's a very good resource to have, and it's just pointing them in the right direction and getting them to where they need to go. So they, you know, so maybe there's, there's some options which we have to still develop, but this is, this is something where they're going to be easily able to find the resources and help that they need. The state does offer it. It's just about shining a light on it and putting them in the right direction.
So you would be, who would be running those sessions, or the clinics, as you said?
So the one at CHRO is run by CHRO, and at DAS directly, you would go up to the, to Department of Administrative Services at 450 Columbus, and, you know, there, it was run by DAS. It helps you, you know, it's like a training session on how to fill out the paperwork, how to clear the hurdles, and, you know, how to get through some of the, you know, tougher paperwork points that, you know, some people may or may not understand. They might be a great electrician or a fabulous plumber, but, you know, maybe not a, you know, someone that's really well at filling out, you know, tons, tons of paperwork, so.
Councillor Frank.
So I've asked this question before. Can you give me an answer? Because we have three projects, three different schools. Just assuming the two elementary schools are going to be built new. Do you have any idea or guesstimate of any kind of how many workers we would have on the job as a total?
Wow, that's really tough. So I would say that it will vary in all stages of construction. Individually, I mean, you could see on a single project at a time, say, so let's take the middle school directly. I mean, you'll probably see upwards in 150 or more workers, probably in the peak of construction. If both of the middles, if both of the elementary schools were to be done at the same time, I don't say, I don't want to say double that number, but I would say in that ballpark at all. It depends on the tightness of the schedule, how quickly they're trying to get things done, how much staff they need to be able to achieve the work in the period of time that they have. But I'd say 150 is probably a?
It's a reasonable peak figure for manpower.
So you're talking peak? So from like, I'm talking start to finish?
Oh, wow.
Because if we're trying to figure out, like, maybe some numbers here, I'm just sort of?
Sure.
Give me a guess. And I'm not going to hold you to it, but just a guess.
If you took all, all of the contractors involved, all of the staff, each of them would bring to the site over the lifetime of, you know, let's call it 18 months of construction, you know, as a, as a talking point, you could easily have well over 400 individuals in total from the various trades and suppliers and installers, et cetera, that would cross through the gates through the life of a particular project.
Do you think we would be, so for each school, you think, or would, or is there a potential for if somebody comes in, we can use them in all three schools at different times?
Again, the, we're talking two conversations, and they're beginning to merge. There's a conversation about contractors, and then there's the conversation about actual labor. If a contractor wins more than one contract, something on the middle school, and something on one of the elementaries, that worker could obviously be in town for, you know, for the duration of both of those projects. It could be that contractor wins contracts on multiple projects, but since they're going to be overlapping, he'll bring additional phases into the crowd. So that we could have, you know, a net of those 300 to 400 people working from site to site, or we could have a greater number of personnel altogether because of the overlap of work and the fact that they'll have to bring in more hands to do the work.
Okay, so, but 400 is your guess, maybe for one site? Is that what you're saying?
Between, I would say easily between 300 and 400 individuals will cross through the gates at some point.
So when you went to the, you're saying the six and a quarter out of the 25%, that's where we're going, those are mandatory?
Correct.
Yes.
For the remaining 75%, we're allowed to set goals. Is that what you're saying?
Beg pardon?
For the remaining 75% of labor, we're allowed to set goals?
Again, we're mixing contracting and labor in the same conversation. The 25% rule is that 25% of the cost of construction is to be executed by small business entities certified by the state. That has nothing to do with who's holding the hammer. That's what company gets the contract to do the work.
So, so I'll try to help. So basically, you know, when you boil it right down, to answer your question, yes, you could set goals for the worker themselves. What Jack is trying to point out is, is that, you know, the companies that you give the work to have these statute requirements. They may employ any number of veterans or women or, you know, otherwise, and that would be tracked as the labor comes to the site. So could you set a percentage on that type of thing? It has been done, if that's, if that's clear. So the contractors, right? I'll try, I'll try again.
Let me just throw out what I'm thinking here, so you can understand.
Okay, that'd be great.
We had the PLA come through here, and we had to vote on it, and we were told that we could set how many, you know, what percentage we want out of all workers to work, come from Groton or the area.
Right.
So we can't do this with this job, take the full number and say this is the percentage we want to come from this area?
You can, but again, that's, that's part two of the conversation. The first part was on the assignment of contracts. The second part of the conversation is, well, somebody has to build this. Once they get the contract, who is Contractor X going to hire to put up my sheetrock?
Yeah.
And when you get to that level of the conversation, yes, the labor force can have goals as far as who those workers might be.
So for instance, if you wanted to say 1% of all workers on the site should be veterans, right? I'm using an arbitrary example, right? Yes is the answer. That can be done. And that goal can be set. That can be communicated to the, the construction manager at risk, where they would, you know, have to fold some language in or whatever it may be. But yes, there are goals that can be set, exactly like you're suggesting.
Okay. These are, these are separate from what the state requires?
That's correct.
They reviewed for you what the state requirement is because it's a state contract. Beyond that, then, we can say, if you so choose, we want 5% veterans or whatever it is. So we have Councillor Heat, and then we have Councillor Zepary.
Sure. Two questions. Well, I guess I would start that by, if we set, say, 5% of the plumbers have to be from the Groton area, but say there aren't enough plumbers to actually accommodate that, is it a flexible goal? It's a goal or it's a requirement?
Well, I would say that it's a goal. And the reason why is, just to be absolutely frank, is requirements, you know, have consequences. And so, you know, to set consequences, you sometimes restrict certain, you know, labor forces or people from, you know, getting involved at times, depending on what that may be. If someone is making a good faith effort, again, changing gears back to CHRO, CHRO has an entire write-up of what good faith effort is. But if they are making that effort, even if they don't meet their goals, they are still deemed compliant. So, so my, my take is that a goal is always better than a requirement, because requirements are sometimes difficult to meet unless you have lots of pieces in play to be able to support those requirements.
There's also a legal component that comes into the topic of requirements. And technically speaking, unless there is a formal disparity study done, you don't really have legs under you for enforcing the requirement. So until that effort were to be expended, it would be risky for the town to say that this is a hard and fast requirement, you must do X, because there's no legal paperwork behind you to say that there is a clear disparity of so many percent of a particular population in order to provide, to, you know, to be very strict about that requirement. So again, that's, you know, from the legal hard knocks, but also from the practical side, I agree with Brian, that providing it as a goal, and then perhaps we look at it as a project goal rather than every single contractor, because we know in the industry, there are certain areas of work where it is extremely difficult. We just don't have the workforce in Connecticut to provide, you know, a contract or a labor designation X in this particular trade. There just aren't enough of them. So again, goal's number one, and then make it a project goal for a percentage rather than an individual contractor goal.
Mr. Burt, and then Councillor Zepary.
I was going to mention?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Another second question.
I was just going to mention that Representative Dela Cruz had sent several PLA agreements to me for samples. Those are goals they use also. They're not requirements. For instance, I've got example language from their agreements. It's pretty typical to have something that says, "The contractor shall make all good faith efforts to solicit employee a minimum of 10%." That's kind of how it's phrased in all of them. So it's always a goal. It's never a requirement, from what I've seen.
I'm sorry. I didn't know you weren't finished. Go ahead.
That's okay. That's good, because what I would like to see is something that's flexible and maybe more broad than, than specific. Like, I'm more interested in employing people from the area, regardless of what their position is or specialty. But that being said, the other thing that you didn't talk about, or I didn't hear it maybe, was apprenticeships. What part, or what can you share with us on that?
Apprenticeships is a difficult topic in the context of open shop, you know, open bidding environment. Apprenticeships are typically the domain of, or the expertise in apprenticeships is often touted by labor unions, because they have historically provided, you know, a very formal process to follow for apprenticeships. You know, the licensed trades will require an apprenticeship, whether you're working for a union contractor or not. But the, you know, historically, the providers of a lot of that education have been through the unions themselves. So in an open shop arena, to try to put a goal for apprenticeships in there becomes a little difficult as to how they're going to pull that off. I work on some other projects that are under a PLA, and there are certain communities in the state that not only have a large resident construction trades workforce, so that they can set robust, you know, residency goals, but they also have training programs in parallel with the unions. They have, you know, jobs training entities, agencies within the municipality that act as feeders into those programs. And in that scenario, where you've got frankly, a depth, you've got a very diversified opportunity to get that training, we found success in providing opportunities like that for apprentices. In a, I'll call it a generic situation of any other town, where you don't have that infrastructure already in place, that would become a difficult goal to meet, and something that could, you know, become more of a stumbling block than an opportunity, because we still need to draw bidders in to accomplish these, these projects. And if you've got something that's required that they really have no ability to fulfill, folks will go look for projects somewhere else that doesn't have those requirements.
I just want to add one thing, because I think it may be helpful in understanding. So El Grasso Technical High School, not far from here, I'm sure you're all familiar with it.
Yes.
That is a open shop construction project. It is not under a PLA. The state's kind of not doing a lot of those right now. And there are apprentices on the job. There are union contractors on that job. You know, when you're taking on the volume of work, where you're talking about 40, 50, 60 million dollars of construction, you are naturally going to get certain, certain, certain winners that are, you know, you know, well-vetted, very well-trained. They have a staff coming up, and, and, you know, through certified payroll, you know, the additional thing is there's a way to track that. So if there are apprentices on the job, that's defined within the certified payroll. And the responsibility is checking that, and you have to sometimes call the union and get what their rate is. If it's not listed on there, are they a 60% apprentice and 80% apprentice and the like? It usually defines what their path through the field is, through their, through their selected trade. So it will happen sort of naturally, if that's, I know that's not a, you know, a reassurance, but I just wanted to point out that non-PLA job, not far from here, fairly large construction, just like the middle school, be ground up. There are plenty of union contractors, and there are apprentices on those jobs, and they're being tracked just for the sake of, you know, understanding, you know, who's serving what on that project. So that is an option, to track it in that manner.
Councillor Zepary.
You've partly answered my question all right along, but I'd like to get right down to the nitty-gritty.
Yes, sir.
If we put specific requirements on percentages of minorities or percentage of the veterans, do we run the risk of delaying the completion of this job if you can't meet those percentages?
If they're requirements, absolutely. If they're goals, you have?
You tried and?
You're putting your, as CHRO indicates, good faith effort.
So anybody who hasn't spoken, Councillor Parker?
So according to the state, we have to do certain things anyways, correct?
That's correct.
So there is already a set number of percentage, according to the law?
Yes, ma'am.
We can add additional percent, goals?
Yes.
if we would like.
So, just so I can clarify, the state requires?
Requires, but are, mine weren't the goals. Correct.
The state requires that percentages of the contracts themselves?
Not the laborers at all.
That's correct.
But for laborers, we can set a goal that we're looking for?
Yes, is the answer. Yes.
Okay.
But there is a distinct difference, so I don't want there to be confusion.
I got that. I just want to make sure. But if we wanted to, on top of what the state requires, we can add additional goals on top of the states, on the contractor.
Okay, so I, I just want to make sure we're abundantly clear and we don't get confused. So the situation is, your goals that you're adding wouldn't be to the contracts themselves? It would be to the labor force that's coming to the job? Is that?
That's not what I asked. That's not what I just said. That's not what I'm asking about. I'm talking about the contractor. Forget the laborers right now. I got that part.
Okay.
Contractors.
Yes.
If we want a certain group, which you have to have per the state, per the CHRO as well as DAS.
Correct.
If we wanted to, we can ask for additional goals on top of that or not, besides what they've already outlined under the state?
You know, I'm not exactly sure.
You can. You can. Again, the conversation turns to the extent that you may wish to do so, and what impact that may have on the pool of bidders. If there are ample bidders of the skill set, of the type, of the trades that are involved, of the size that are necessary to execute a particular scope of work, you know, for the middle school, we're talking about 156,000 square foot building. You've got to get contractors that are capable of handling a particular volume of work within their trade in order for that project to succeed in the timeline that we have. There are, quite honestly, a variety of folks on the DAS list, some of which are frankly, too small to do much on this project or these projects, others that could handle reasonable chunks. But the DAS threshold is a company of $15 million annual volume and less. So that sets a kind of a relative scale, and I can't compare it for you. You know, Contractor X is over 15, and this other one is under 15 million. That is the threshold that they use to qualify as a small business enterprise. There may be a lack of sufficient large companies within the DAS list to pull off a more significant percentage of, call it designated or set aside work. So we could, we could explore something more than 25%, but again, use, because we're restricted to that list of DAS pre-qualified minority and women or small business entities, depending on which part of the math we're looking at, the small business? business threshold may keep you from securing enough bidders that can be competitive to allow, that are big enough to get the work done.
So, not if we don't add additional goals, how many contract bidders will we even have if it's already setting below women already?
Yeah, well, maybe this is, maybe, maybe I can explain it in a way that helps. So, let's say you want to give a million dollar contract to a contractor. That contractor required by state law has to give two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of that contract away to a small business minority, et cetera. So, if you were to take the, if you were to take the value and say, "No, we want a fifty percent," right, then you would say, "Okay, we're going to give you a million dollar contract, but you have to find five-hundred-thousand dollars worth of contractors to be able to do that work." So, your company's taking on a million dollar contract, but you're giving five-hundred-thousand dollars away, and then you have to manage all of those folks as well.
Is that not what's going to end up happening?
Well, the twenty-five percent is a requirement, but what happens is, is if you, what I'm trying to point out is if you start to raise the levels too high, it's, you know, it becomes a benefit analysis for the company, right? If you think about it, you know, would you, you know, would you, would you give, would you go to work and make a thousand dollars and give five-hundred dollars to someone else and give them a part of your work? You know, you know, companies make decisions that are, that are good for their company, you know, and so, as those goals get more lofty, it gets more difficult to find the, not only the contractors, as Jacks point out, that to actually physically do the work, but it gets more difficult to find contractors that are willing to take on that, that goal or that, or that responsibility of farming that much of their contract out.
Okay. Not setting the goals, just doing the requirements, how is this going to be broken down? From the DAS list, it's got to be twenty-five percent, correct? Is it broken down by what each contractor, what are you putting out, what will you be putting out for them to bid on?
Sure. The construction manager will assess the work necessary to accomplish the project and divide the work into various what are called bid packages. It could be as straightforward as, you know, there's plumbing, there's electric, there's site work, there's roofing. There may be opportunities within those different breakdowns of work to pull out a portion of it. Say it's masonry, but perhaps a portion, a portion of the masonry is separated out, and we're going to say that the blockwork for the stairwells is going to be a set aside package that can only be responded to by small businesses or minority businesses. So, you're taking a subset of the things. So, now that, that creates something easier to digest for those resources, but it becomes more work for the CM to manage more moving parts. Instead of one mason, he may have two or three now on the project. And it's up to the CM, you know, we're using the delivery model called construction manager at risk, so there is an obligation that the CM has to absorb the risks for all of these other contractors, and they need to balance that risk with the other constraints of the project, most important of which for us is cost and schedule. So, they have to balance all of those things. In a project that's as aggressive as this is, the more moving parts we have, the more difficult it's going to be for them to achieve that balance.
And this may be helpful to you as well, so the contractor being responsible, being the construction manager at risk, they have to set up these meetings with CHRO, and once they develop their bid packages, they go and they meet with, with, you know, the human, human rights, okay? And, and they sit down and they go through, and human rights will say, "Okay, for instance, you know, typical construction twenty years ago, sixteen divisions, sixteen contractors, that was how it worked, okay?" Nowadays, on especially larger projects, in the projects of this ilk, you may have twenty, twenty-five, thirty contractors, thirty-five contractors that are responsible, and CHRO works with them to develop the CMR's plan on how they're going to be complying, right? So, they may say, "We have a, we have a certified contractor that is, does caulking, and caulking alone, right, that's all they do." So, they may get a portion of the package that may be in the masonry where they would caulk all the joints between the masonry, so that's given to that contractor. And that level of delineation as far as how many, you know, bid packages there are, that's worked out with CHRO, and the CMR is responsible for that. So, it is, there is development there.
So, I just want to try to clarify things at this point before we go with more questions. So, what I'm hearing is that if we place further goals on the contractors beyond the state requirements, that's going to be restrictive, and your concern is that we may not be able to reach those goals if we place them on the contractors. So, your suggestion of anything is to set a project goal for laborers, and then go for the laborers across the whole project with additional percentages if the council so chooses. Is that, is that the right way we want to think?
I think that's a more, that's a more achievable way of enhancing the opportunities of each of these projects.
Okay. Does anybody else who hasn't spoken once yet want to speak before we go back to double? Counselor Bob Gardner.
Who would lead the outreach for- You described some of the feeder programs that other municipalities have to, you know, achieve those higher end goals, you know, set out by, you know, the set asides. So, could you describe those, that, some of those programs a little more in-depth? I know here in eastern Connecticut, we have EWEB, the Eastern Workforce Investment Board, and I know they do a lot of work in, in getting laborers really in the pipeline to find work and then ultimately getting work locally. So, is that a program, you know, Groton could work with, NONG could work with, or I guess how would, could this work?
Arcadis works with entities like that in other communities. Again, the main player in all of this is the construction manager. They are the one that, they are the ones that, you know, break the project down into those bid packages, into those pieces, and can, can best work with the workforce development folks to describe the types of work that the project will require. We've done that in Hartford. We have, we've partnered with the construction managers, and we do have outreach. There are entities, Hartford, there's one called the Minority Construction Council, which has minority-owned businesses as their membership, but they also do what they call matchmaker events, where not only do contractors come and meet the construction manager to learn more about the projects, but then they also invite in folks to, from these training programs and other workforce development programs, to learn about the projects, because if you're pumping out another fifty asbestos workers in your next class, but there's no asbestos work, no abatement work on a particular project, you're not creating opportunity for that. So, if the development, workforce development people can get an understanding of the type of work that's involved, maybe they'll swing their needle over towards masons or electricians or plumbers in order to focus on where there might be shortfalls in the region in order to encourage the, the development efforts.
Right, thank you.
I've had a request for a five-minute recess, so, recess for five minutes. All right, we are back at eight-twenty-five to continue our committee of the whole, and I'm going to put something on the floor for discussion, and perhaps we'll see where everybody goes with this. So, I am going to suggest that the council set project goals for laborers as follows: five percent residents of Groton according to zip code, ten percent minority, which would include women, and five percent veterans. So, I'll repeat that. So, these would be project goals for laborers. Five percent residents of Groton by zip code, ten percent minority, which includes women, and five percent veterans. Yes, sir?
By resident, are we counting, you say tracking by zip code, we're tracking city and town residents, correct?
Yes, please.
They have the same zip code.
Well, Mystic, Mystic does not, so, so Groton residents. So, you, just to clarify, you feel that these are goals that could potentially be reached without impeding bidding and without slowing down the project?
We do.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so, so I didn't make a form, do we want a formal motion?
Do you want a question?
I'll make it a motion.
Second.
Second, Judge Zepary. Grantowski, Zepary, okay. Counselor Franco was next on the list, go ahead.
So, do you know what the current Groton labor force is right now? Do you know what the health of it is and what, what kind of, people are looking for jobs and contractors out there?
I think John Reiner had mentioned it's about, the unemployment rate is about three-point-eight percent, but that was coming from Mr. Reiner. I would have to find where he, where he got that data from, that data point.
Three-point-eight?
Three-point-eight.
But that, that's, that's all unemployment, that's not just the work.
Correct, correct, and not, not just these trades that would be on the school.
We're not looking to be on unemployment.
You would arguably need a separate study to be able to identify, you know, worker in, you know, ex-construction trades versus the masses to be able to, you know, give you a real number. I don't want to, you know-
I just didn't know possibly if you knew how, what the labor market is out there, like, it's pretty dry, so there's a lot of laborers out there looking for work, or, I mean-
I can say the industry as a whole, you know, not just specific to this area, is lacking workers, probably running around, you know, three percent or less in the industry sort of nationwide, right? I am looking for people constantly. I put requisitions out there to hire people, and we don't get qualified candidates. So, sometimes any candidates at all, most of our applications nowadays are really coming from out of the country, unfortunately.
All right, so, if these are just goals, I think five percent of, we probably could hire five percent out of Groton, but I think that's a very, that's holding the bar very low, and from some correspondence that I had with even the town manager, we had, we had looked at some other ones, and they were closer to like thirty percent, and that was over quite a few different contracts.
And this was, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Burt wanted to speak as well, so who wants to go first?
I think I saw one at thirty, mostly they're around fifteen, ten to fifteen range for most of them. One or two of them said thirty.
I, to be fair, like, if you look at like the city of Hartford or like the city of New Haven, especially New Haven has their own EEO compliance department, I mean, you will see higher numbers, for sure, but they have programs that have been operating there for ten, fifteen years to sort of do the, the things that Jack was talking about, maybe longer, and so, it's not that those goals are not a hundred percent obtainable, but you need that sort of backstop or that infrastructure to be able to, be able to move the worker into the right place at the right time. I can tell you city of Hartford for sure has those goals, I can tell you the New Haven has goals that high, but most municipalities in the state of Connecticut won't.
Yeah, I was at Meriden, they built a school.
Yep.
And they're, I believe their population is about sixty thousand.
By, by reference to Meriden, if I may, their residency goal was thirty percent on the Platt and Maloney High School renovation projects, which were Arcadis projects.
Okay.
Our, I've got a copy of the final report for the Platt project, which achieved a project goal of twenty-two against, they delivered twenty-two against a goal of thirty.
Okay. I just don't think we should start at five. So, if I said thirty and we ended up with twenty-two, I would be ecstatic.
I think we don't know what we're talking about. How can we set goals that high?
Again, you know, as Brian mentioned and I mentioned earlier, municipalities that have the infrastructure of the training programs and such, I work in Hartford, I worked in schools in Hartford for the last eight and a half years, they have a thirty percent local labor target, and we have met that target, but they have significant infrastructure as far as training programs, they have a PLA, they've got the PLA for seventeen or eighteen years, to where everybody has been in that groove of grooming these recruits, bringing them into the trades, bringing them into the programs, to, to, if you were to choose thirty as your goal tonight, I would argue strongly against it, because you don't have that kind of infrastructure, but you may be right, five percent might be a little lean. You could, you may, you may do better than that, but again, we don't know what the employment profile looks like in Groton. You know, how many people are tradesmen, and is that somebody like my dad who built houses, or somebody who's building sixty million dollar, seventy million dollar construction projects?
Wait, we've got people in line to speak. So, are you set? So, we have Heed and then Overy and then Zepary.
So, this five, ten, five, five percent residents, ten percent minority, five percent veterans, that I can understand better, the residents are of Groton, not of just the region, Norwich, New London area, but the, my, sorry, my question is, what would the difference be with an actual PLA? So, would it be fifteen percent, would it be broader area?
They're each different, it all depends on what your goals are to give them. They would have negotiated with us under PLA to set these same goals.
Got you, okay.
And again, the goals that the unions would commit to under a PLA are negotiated based on where the project is located and what the labor profile looks like, so it's not a one-sty, you know, it's not a cookie cutter solution. Every, every project location has its own variables in the workforce, and so the unions, if they're going to put their neck on the line with a PLA, even in, as I say, in Meriden, we had the PLA, they had those numbers out there, and I think the only one of the varieties of commitment that were, were reached was the minority workforce. All the others, the veteran, female, and resident workforces came in under the goals.
And just, just to add in here, according to the gentleman that came before us advocating for the PLA, he said there are approximately a hundred and fifty Groton residents in the building trades, and he claimed there was forty percent unemployment among them, which would mean sixty-two people would be available to do this work, according to what we were told.
Excuse me, I don't think he was talking about Groton, he was talking about the region.
That's correct, that's what I said.
No, he said Groton.
It was the region. He said the region.
Well, okay.
I specifically asked for Groton.
Yeah. So, we have Overy and then Zepary, and then Atwater.
Well, my feeling is that we, we need to keep them very reasonable because of the fact that we don't have a huge trained workforce, and there's great competition for EB right now for people that are in the trades. So, I think if we keep these as a goal, it would be reasonable, and I think you'll probably find that it'll happen, just by who has the ability to do different things. Unfortunately, we have more women now that are trained for construction than in the past. Have you worked at all with the, or you probably have, but we have the new workforce-
Pipeline?
Pipeline for where the area schools are training for particular, you know, trades and so forth? It might be something that would be helpful to you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the opportunity to place all of this information in the construction, construction manager's hands, anything that anyone, you know, that lives here and raises their family here, that can provide information is, is nothing but helpful to the process. So, personally, no, I have not worked with them. I have worked with the technical high schools for a long time, but not, not locally, but if there is specific information or there are groups, and you mentioned one as well, what that you were-
Yes, the Eastern Workforce Investment Board.
Sure.
And actually, they're the coordinating agency for the pipeline.
Yeah, so, so, that's great, so, you know, we could, if we can reach out to them, we'll take some notes and see what is, we'll pass it along.
I just thought it might be something, you used the FAS name. The other thing I just thought I'd mention, just for the heck of it, when you're talking about zip codes, there's actually a different zip code for the sub-basin, so you might want to throw that into the mix, because there are people coming out of there that are very well-trained.
There you go.
I think that's all I really had.
Okay, so, we're on to Counselors Zepary and then Counselor Atwater.
You, you said that you thought our five, ten, five proposal that is actually a motion before the council might be a little- that is actually a motion before the council might be a little light. What would you recommend as the distribution?
I was agreeing with Counselor Franco that perhaps you could do better than that on the resident workforce.
Okay.
Speaking specific to that component of it.
Can you give us a number that you would recommend as a better...
Quite honestly, I don't know your area as well as you do. And again, if that number from the proponent of the PLA was 100 and, what, 165? 150 tradespeople in Groton itself, from the area that we'll be monitoring. Again, you know, to my earlier point, if half of those are home builders, they are not going to be the type of labor force that the contractors working on your schools will need to draw from. So it's difficult for that raw number to truly give us a picture as to, gee, how deep can we reach? How high should we reach with a goal? You know, how deep into the labor pool can we reach to draw these people in? And so what type of work do they do, and what are they doing today? Because it's not often that you find folks giving up a job, a steady job, to come work for a contractor that they don't know for what could be one project.
So you're not able to tell us that, you say we could do better than that, but you're not able to make a recommendation for change in that ratio?
I would hesitate to do that. I think whatever number I threw out would be arbitrary. And again, since we are talking about project-wide goals, and as long as we all, you know, two years from now, come back and look at the final numbers and don't throw things at each other when the numbers aren't quite that robust, then I think we'll be fine.
I would just make a comment to my fellow counselors that we are interested in getting this school built expeditiously, all three schools. And I do not want to impede the progress of the people that we put in charge of it by placing on them the burden of artificial ratios that they can't meet. I think we should give them a realistic ratio. I think the 5-10-5 is realistic, and I think that's what we should stick with.
Counselor Atwater.
I'm trying to do some math here quickly, and I'm not sure that it's correct. But just, I'm assuming with the population of about 40,000 people in Groton, it'd say 30,000 are in the workforce? I mean, is that, I don't know what the number is. I'm sorry?
I think it's less than that.
Okay, well, if it's less, but if you've got 3.8 percent unemployment, that means you've got about 1,200 people that are out of work. Is that, is my math correct there?
This is actually, you keep talking, I'll look at them.
A lot of people are retired. We have a lot of seniors who are retired.
David? I did just a little quick math, but if at 5 percent, if we had 400 people on the job, that's 20 people.
Right, right.
That would be hiring 20 local people.
If I may, through the chair, to clarify, we're not talking about somebody who might be on the job for an hour, or a day, or even a week, and checking a box that's saying that one of those 20 people has arrived. When we talk about percentages, we're talking about the percent of labor hours expended on the project. So if we have, you know, 400 different faces walk through the gate, and it's the equivalent of, you know, 200 people at 2,000 hours a year, we're going to take the percentage of that number of labor hours to assess our success ratio, not the fact that one of 20 people walked through the day, through the gate.
Right, it would equal 20 full-time people from start to finish.
It becomes, you know, a ratio of the overall labor hours, yes.
Okay, I have, I'm going to jump in. I have the Circ Town Profile for 2018. Unemployed residents for the town of Groton is 830. Unemployment rate, 4.5. This is overall. Okay, now it goes to, I have to find the other one.
I guess, I guess, Counselor Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
All I'm trying to say is if you have 830 people that are unemployed, how many of those are unemployed in the construction trade? And how many of those are you actually going to provide a job for? I guess, I mean, I think we're kind of battling over something that's almost a moot point, that we'll do our best, and that's what we should do.
So one other thing, they have business sector. There are 23 in the town of Groton, in construction, rather. There are 50 construction businesses in the town of Groton. And I'm looking for the labor force overall, so you know.
They don't have to be unemployed at this moment to be able to get on a job.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that if you're looking at numbers of trying to help people, I think 5 percent is sufficient.
Labor, yes, labor force is 26,000, sorry, that's what I was trying to get.
26,000.
26,000, that includes residents employed, residents unemployed, and self-employed. So it's 26,000 overall. That's everything, all trades. Okay, so I think, Parker, you spoke on, has anybody not spoken? Schmidt, Counselor Schmidt, did you want to speak before we start going back?
I think we're dealing with figures that we don't know anything about. And these figures could have a tremendous impact on building the new schools and on the financial costs. And I think that we have to be as conservative as we can be in order to actually carry forward with this big project. And I think that these are reasonable percentages.
Okay, so we can go back through. So Baumgartner.
Just a clarifying question on the motion. Is there a reason as to what the minority percentage and then the women percentage are included as one, as opposed to being bifurcated?
Right, because I just thought we could roll everything into one number rather than breaking it out separately. I think you will find less female construction tradespeople than you will find others. So it would be just easier just to roll it into the minority.
Because, I mean, 10 percent in my eye, when you include the 2, I think, and, you know, I agree with many who have said maybe the 5 percent is too low. I would also say the 10 percent is too low, considering, I mean, we have probably at least 5 to 10 percent of active building trades being women alone, and then probably a quarter of building trades alone being minority themselves. So sure, we could boost those two numbers as well. And then, you know, I haven't seen any numbers on veterans, but, you know, certainly, you know, given our location and close by the subbase, I'm sure we could up it too. But I'd only go up from here in supporting, you know, in what we have now, so.
Just from my experience at the tech school, we don't have very many girls in the construction trades. And I was just saying, when we were on recess, we had our first, just this month, we had our first female electrician licensed out of our school in all the years it's been there. So there aren't that many women that go into the construction trades and actually pursue it, which, come on, girls, get with it. Anybody else? All right, I'm sorry, you're not done?
But, no, if I may interject, now the, it's so, if the 5 percent isn't necessarily Groton residents, then it would branch out to the county and then the state? Is that, is that correct?
My motion was for Groton zip codes. That's different from what the state requires for contractors.
Right, that's set up by CHRO.
Right.
So, but I, my question is, if we're, so if we were to meet those hiring goals, would it then go to, you know, meeting that 5 percent within? That's where I'm just confused.
If we were to not meet it?
Yes.
Then you just, you hire whomever you can hire?
And it then wouldn't drop back to, say, county and then state?
No. That's what the contractors do, that, but I don't have that written in here. I was just looking out for the town.
I just wasn't sure if that was required by CHRO within that, you know, required percentage, that's 6.5.
It is, it is, it is project dollars-driven. So it's a percentage, 25 percent of the total contract value, 6.5, or 6.4 percent total contract value. So if that's, if that makes sense, it's based off of, you know, money. Not people necessarily in regards to the CHRO requirement.
Are you set? So we have Overy and Franco.
I was just wondering, when you're trying to do this, and you're hiring, you put out for a specific type of contractor to come in and do something like dig the tile or whatever, do you suggest to them that you're trying to accommodate certain numbers? Is that part of the application when they're applying for a contract?
It would be part of the description of the bid package. You know, part of what they would respond to with their bid would be the documents, the construction documents created by the design team, as well as terms and conditions that the construction manager would publish. And if we were to implement these goals for labor, those would become some of the terms and conditions that they would be required by contract to pursue. So it gets written right into the scope of their work.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Franco.
I do recall us, at one point, there was, we were talking PLA, and the whole goal was also to try and keep the money within our community and to help the people that are living in our community. And that is why I think the apprenticeship was so important. And I also think trying to have a large number of local workers was important. And that's why I'm pushing for higher numbers, which are goals. I'm not asking for a requirement. I think it's a goal. And if I have to compromise and say 15 percent, and even if they get somewhere close to that, would be ecstatic. But I think keeping the bar very low does not help our community either. So I understand people's concerns about the school and getting it going forward. But let me ask you, if we put the bid package out and we say, hey, we want like 15 percent to live in this area, are people just not going to apply and put in a bid because they think, oh, I can't hire 15 percent?
If it's a goal?
If it's a goal, that gives them the flexibility to try. And if it's, you know, not a hard stop if they don't get there, then they may still be interested. If it's unrealistic, they may look at it as, well, what else is the project going to be unrealistic about? And again, there is enough work in the market at present that if I had the same discussion with the Labor Committee in Hartford this morning, that there is so much work in the market that we are finding in Hartford because they have very robust expectations and frankly, a lot of paperwork and administrative burden on the contractor, that we've had contractors say, you know, when times are slow, I'm willing to do your extra work. Times are better, I can get work anywhere, I'm not going to bother with your administrative burden. So there's a fine line between, I really want to reach and do something good for my community, and people saying, not my turn, I'll go somewhere else. So we still need to draw a sufficient number of bidders in to make sure we have competitive pricing.
And we're still open for union workers to come in as well?
Absolutely, absolutely, 100 percent.
I think every open shop job that I've been involved in has had a minimum of 50 percent union contractors respond. Again, as Brian mentioned before, you're talking about a scale of work that not everybody who calls themselves a contractor is able to accomplish. And most of the firms that are large enough happen to be union firms. So I think there's ample opportunity for contractors of all flavor, union and non-union, and, you know, across the various trades.
Now, are there any other large construction companies around here? I don't know, like, for example, AZ Corporation. I don't know what they're considered, if they're considered medium, large, small.
AZ?
They're more of a construction manager.
Well, they do most, they do some self-perform work. Yeah, AZ is a pretty good-sized company, but they do a lot of their work as a construction manager. They do do fit-ups and, you know, shopping, you know, centers and things of that nature. They absolutely do the healthcare work, things of that nature. AZ is a pretty good, pretty good-sized corporation. They do a fair amount of work every year. And I'm just going to add this in, so maybe it's helpful in the long run, right? You have five only, five only, DAS pre-qualified contractors in this town. Five.
Five.
All of them, there is a site work and caving company. There is a, there is a modeling and environmental data analysis company. This is right from the DAS website on BizNet. You can search by individual, you know, area code and then search it down and boil it down. If you look in the New London area, and, or I should say, this whole area, this is the amount of contractors, all of them, that are in that area that are DAS certified. These are not construction people. This is all. So to answer your question, yes, if you look at some of the larger companies, there are a few. And there are some great contractors that aren't necessarily in this town, you know, zip code, but very close by, there are some great contractors.
Which may employ people from Groton.
Which I would, which some of them are working at El Grasso right now as we speak. So I believe, yes, that they would entertain bidding and working in the town continually because they're already working here, you know, assuming they can do the work, right? I mean, they might make a decision that, hey, we're overburdened, and we can't bite off that right now. We can't control that, but just to put it into perspective for you.
Right, thank you. Counselor Heed.
So on the 5 percent for residents of Groton, this is, just so everybody's clear, in addition to the state requirement that there also be regional, I forget what that number is.
Yes, that was my intention.
Right.
25 percent.
But...
No, 6.2, no, 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 no. No, there is a number, it's preference given to, for, preference given to the labor market, which is Norwich, New London County.
And this just tightens it so that you try and get a little bit more. I mean, I think, you know, like, one of the reasons why I ran for council is for economic development. So you sell some schools, you encourage, you know, development and sort of mixed-use development in already developed areas as opposed to conservation land. And you encourage spending that helps the local employment. So I'm comfortable with this idea of 5-10-5, just for the record.
Okay, everybody's had a chance. Counselor Atwater, and then anyone else who wants to speak again.
Make a motion, recall the question.
Can we call the question in committee of the whole? We cannot call the question in committee of the whole.
Will you know what I'm thinking?
I know. We know what you're thinking. It's, in the rules, you helped write, Counselor Zeperry.
It's actually in here. You cannot move the question in committee of the whole. You can only move the question in council.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we've all spoken at least once. Many of us have spoken more than once. Is there anything else that anyone wants to say at this point? Okay, so seeing none, so then I'll restate what my motion that I made and that Counselor Zeperry seconded was. We're setting project goals for laborers for our school projects. Of 5 percent residents according to Groton zip codes, 10 percent minority, including women, and 5 percent veterans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Could you raise your hand, please, so I can, I have a feeling we're going to have it split. So Zeperry, Schmidt, Atwater, Overy, Granitowski, Heed, Parker, opposed. Baumgartner, and Franco, and no abstentions, correct? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that passes 7 to 2 to 0. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. And your face. And we'll see you around Grasso. I'll keep the kids out of the construction site.
We'll be here quite a lot of times.
Looking forward to the day you're not there and we can move in. All right, we're on to 2018, 454, fill the manager of public library services position on page 58. And, huh, I'm not sure, this is no formal action, so this just requires concurrence of the town council. Mr. Zagami.
Good evening. I'm here with Jen Bailey, the newly-appointed director of library services. And we're looking at the manager of library public services for the position we're asking for. This position will report directly to the director, which is her. And it's a front-end position, but it's not only managerial, but it also works in the trenches. Some of the responsibilities that are included here are coordinating the FTEs, the full-time employees, scheduling, programming, working for the public service desk where the library provides information, customer service, IT, technical services, and referrals. Also sets up the programs for the adults, children, teens, and services, the seniors also. Reviewing and overseas marketing and advertising, conducts evaluations on the employees, heavily involved in budgeting, strategic planning, and grant writing. And as we all know, the library is open about 64.5 hours per week. And I look at the visiting of the library, we looked at something like three thousand four hundred fifty-one visited the library in one week, two hundred ninety-six calls fielded, and that doesn't even include the library's outreach services. Last year, they had about two hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred twenty-five visited the library, twenty-four thousand people attended programs. So in other words, what we have is a position which is heavily inundated with responsibilities, and it has a pay range of seventy-three thousand to eighty-four thousand, and that's basically what we're looking at. I think the position's well worth investing in.
Would you like to add anything?
My name is Jennifer Mealy, like Bob had mentioned, I'm the new director of library services at Groton Public Library. And I would just like to reiterate some of the things that Bob has mentioned, that it's an integral manager, it facilitates busy front-end operations and supervising eleven full-time and part-time staff and their various activities, which, as he explained, we have many people that attend the library. This position also serves as one of the team, including a daily public service desk hours, up to possibly twenty hours a week, rotational Saturdays and rotational nights. So we would like to sustain this current service and request the council fill this much-needed position of manager of public service, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. So there's, as noted here, the funding for the position is already included in the budget.
Yes, it is.
Questions for Mr. Sagami or Ms. Mealy? Counselor Franco. So the job description was last prepared in two thousand and nine. So my question is, does this need to be updated? And as a new, you're new, right?
Yeah, yes, one week.
Is there something that you might like to tweak this position and make it a little different than what it is? Mr. Burt wanted to respond.
Bob and I had that discussion earlier today, and I think you'd already discussed it with Jen, that, yeah, we'll update the description, but not to the level where it would change pay or anything else like that, I think we can do that internally, but we'll update it, yeah.
I thought it'd be best. I'm sorry, I just thought it might be best if she got to, I keep saying she, if Jen got into position and, you know, felt her way around, and maybe, she may want to reconfigure whatever she wants and change the position now that she's in charge.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Absolutely, definitely need to review.
Great minds think alike.
Counselor Overy.
You've been working at the library.
I have. This is the position that I actually vacated, so.
Your past boss, did she write a letter of recommendation?
Oh, yes, yes, she did.
She told me I had to hire her.
What's that?
Benian told me I had to hire her.
She's the best one to be saying.
Absolutely, definitely a mentor, so.
Seeing no further questions, is there consensus to move ahead with filling a position? Any disagreement?
Definitely.
All right, great, thank you very much, thank you for waiting.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, congratulations. On to five E, twenty eighteen dash four eight seven, fill one full-time assistant animal control officer position. This is page sixty-one, and again, no formal actions required. Again, just the concurrence of the council, and Chief has been waiting patiently as well. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, this is a position that was recently vacated. We have one full-time assistant animal control officer. Formerly, we had a host of people that worked in the animal control facility, including a part-time ACO and some kennel hands, really down to one full-time ACO. The assistant ACO filled the gap after hours when the full-time primary ACO was not working. So we had one that would stagger their start times on the evening shift and on weekends, and that's this position here. It does cover the entirety of the town, including the town, city, and Groton, Long Point, so the, our ACOs respond to calls all over at various times of the day. So it is a critically important position to the town.
I have a question. You use the term, you discontinued use of kennel hands. Do you ever take, would you consider taking volunteers in again to assist?
We've had volunteers in the past, there's, like everything, there's pluses and minuses with that. We had some before that, you know, are no longer with us for a variety of reasons.
Is there a liability when you bring in volunteers?
There is, sure, if something happens where an animal injures them, sure, the town would have to cover them under workman's comp and things of that nature.
Okay, all right, we can talk off. Counselor Baumgartner.
Do you know if other surrounding departments have the, any capacity to maybe work with Groton on some combined services relating to animal control?
I think the town manager explored that in the past, I'm not mistaken.
I have a series of meetings with Mayor Allen and Ledger, they had an interest in it, but they wanted to get rid of theirs and bring it our way, but the numbers didn't remotely work out, but we did take a good thorough look at it.
We have Counselors of Perry and then Counselor Heed.
You know, as I look around in Groton, it seems that there are more coyotes than there are stray dogs. Are we doing anything to control the coyote population with our animal control officers?
No, we're not, that's really beyond the scope of what they do. I mean, clearly, if there are nuisance to someone, then they would take action if they involved, but a lot of that is left to the Department of Environmental Protection.
I've heard that they're running in packs, especially over at the golf course. It seems like it's, there are people that, there in that neighborhood that are quite concerned about it.
My son had a shoe one out of our yard the other day, it was trapped in our backyard running around digging up the yard.
Yeah, certainly, if we get a call, they'll respond, they'll handle it accordingly.
Over to John Suss.
He thought it was really cold.
Counselor Heed.
About how many animals on the, you know, low side, high side, and on the average, would you say are in there?
I don't have that off the top of my head, I could get you those stats if you're interested in it.
I would, thank you.
Counselor Overy.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear your answer about the volunteers being able to help.
We've had volunteers in the past.
Right.
We've had varying degrees of success with volunteers. We've had varying degrees of success with volunteers, we don't have any right now. Doesn't mean we could never use them again, they would not be able to do this job that the ACOs do.
Don't know, I understand that, but.
In the past, they've done feeding, and we do have GAF, GAF has been very helpful to us, they do procure a lot of resources, they're instrumental in putting together the plan for the ACO facility, which is, I got to tell you, probably the best in the region. But we have had volunteers, and again, if we use them, they're just inside the facility to help with feeding and care.
Do you think you could maybe really look into making that happen again? I know a lot of people were very disappointed when it had to be discontinued before.
Yeah, I'd look into it, sure.
Thank you. And one other thing I might suggest, so next time that we have our police chief, can we make him first? We always make him sit here for the whole evening.
I thought it was a test.
Usually I try to do that, but the only reason I put the, we were concerned, I was told to originally put the goals at first, and then me and the mayor had a discussion over things and kind of asked it over. We had a lot of things that all wanted to go first, so usually we do try to put that kind of thing first, though.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Counselor Franco.
Thank you.
So as I just checked with the last, with the director of the library, this was last updated in two thousand and seven, job description, is there anything in here that needs to be updated?
I don't think there's really any substantive changes that need to be included in this, it's, we hired for this position since I've been here, the ACOs, really, there's some language governing their activities, the state statute, I think our job description's pretty comprehensive.
Okay. Okay, seeing no further questions, does anyone disapprove of filling this position? Looks like we have consensus, thank you, sir.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you, too. All right, so we are on to our last two items here, five F is, committee of twenty eighteen, five oh one, committee of the whole, twenty nineteen regular meeting schedule on page sixty-four. I have one suggestion, I guess we need to make a motion, I'm sorry, whose turn is it? Counselor Franco. Page sixty-four. Motion to recommend a resolution approving the committee of the whole regular meeting scheduled for two thousand and nineteen as attached, I second.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker. I just wanted to, I went through this, and I just wanted to see if we wanted to suggest a change here, and we're looking at the December twenty nineteen meeting. There's a meeting scheduled for December twenty-third, and that is actually Hanukkah. And I was going to suggest that we move that cow to December seventeen. So that would push it up to the week prior.
My personal meeting.
Excuse me?
Oh, no, no, we would just do that before, never mind.
Is that a problem?
I doubt there'd be much business, two weeks in a row for cows. You might want to do what you're doing this year, then, yeah, eliminate two and just do one.
Just eliminate it?
So, okay, so my original idea was to eliminate the twenty-third and add the seventeen. Mr. Burt is suggesting what?
That we, just like we're doing this year, we get rid of both cows, the two cows, and just go to the one on the seventeenth.
Which date do you think would be better?
Seventeenth is fine, if you want to split the difference, just like, that's what we're doing this year with the eighteenth.
All right, so we, the suggestion then would be to eliminate the tenth and the twenty-third and have one cow on the seventeenth. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there, so, let's see, how do I do this? I'll amend the schedule, everything the same, with the exception of the December meetings. I move, we eliminate the December tenth and December twenty-third meetings and instead insert one cow on December seventeenth. That's my amendment.
Second.
So, okay. We do this differently than we did on our ticket, okay. So I moved an amendment. Heed seconded. So then when we vote, we will be voting on the amended schedule. Anyone else have any issues or wish to make any other changes? Okay, so then we will be voting on the amended schedule concerning the December meetings. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. And then the last is five G, twenty eighteen dash five hundred, town council twenty nineteen regular meeting schedule, page sixty-six. I'm sorry.
If we voted on making the change of the motion, then don't we have to vote on the whole motion?
Well, when I said it, I said we're voting on the schedule as amended. We can have two votes if you'd like.
No, it's fine.
Would you prefer to have two votes, one on the amendment and one on the whole thing?
No, it's fine.
Okay, you're good? Okay. Counselor Heed.
I will make a motion to recommend a resolution for approval of the town council's regular meeting schedule for two thousand and nineteen as attached.
Second. Moved by Heed, seconded by Parker. Counselor Franco. I'd like to discuss possibly having two town council meetings in the month. It has been, some citizens had recommended it, and in this way also, we can push through some of our items in the cow quicker than having to wait until the first of the following month.
We've seen.
More meetings. Could you repeat that, please? The possibility to add a second town council meeting during the month, so that we would have town council, cow, town council, cow. So every time we had a cow, the next week, we would go through the town council meeting and just approve them all. And I think also the town council meetings would become not as long. Town council meetings are usually the shorter meetings, the cows are usually the killer meetings.
Right, my only concern is with now having a person gone in my office, it's really hard keeping up with, it takes a lot of our time doing these. As it is, we don't have extra hours, it would be difficult to add another one in.
Counselor Heed.
I hate to sound like a New Englander, but hasn't it always been done this way, and why change it?
No, and they used to have two.
Is that true?
I think so.
Yes, that is true.
What is that?
Has it normally been one council meeting and two cows?
No, they just changed that, and the last council. Before that, it was council, cow, council, cow. I think, I think the reason is because the long meetings are the cow meetings, and that's where we have to slog through everything, and the council meetings are the fairly short meetings where we've done all the discussion already and it's just pretty cut and dried. So like tonight, this is a cow tonight, so I think, I, I'm not sure, I shouldn't speak for the prior council, but I, that would be my guess, that would be the rationale as to why they did that.
And we had more staff in my office back when there were more, it'd be difficult now.
We certainly have enough of special council meetings.
Right. Anybody else want to comment on this? Counselor Overy.
I think we, I don't know exactly how we do it, but I think we should keep an option open to have that other meeting, because I don't think any of us like the ones that just go on and on and on, because there's so much on it, and if it's building up, I think we should then say, okay, this month, we're going to need to have four meetings.
Isn't that what a special, sorry, isn't that what a special meeting is?
That's what I'm saying, I think we should exercise that more than we have.
But again, it's not the council, it's not the council meeting itself that's about, it's the cows where we get the long meetings, right? Counselor Atwater?
No, no.
Oh, Counsel Baumgartner.
So I know May, the city has their elections, as well as in August, there's sometimes a primary, I know we're in the off year, but not that we'd have a primary here in town, because it'd be the municipal elections, but just to be aware of that, that would, so, so it would be Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand and eighteen, that's the first Tuesday of the month. And then I believe the city elections has their elections in May.
It would be the forty-seventh, it's a Monday, I believe.
But that's.
Oh, great, Monday's right.
It's a Monday, it's a Monday. So.
Oh, Monday, okay.
That doesn't, that doesn't conflict, I don't believe, with this. Let me look and see what, I thought I had gone through everything. May seventh is the first, no, May sixth is the first Monday, is that what the city has, first Monday of the month?
Correct.
So May sixth would be the city election, that does not conflict with this. And then I don't know the primary rule, Counselor Baumgartner, do you, what is the primary rule?
I thought it was the first Tuesday in August.
In August, so then that would be, well, this would definitely be the second, first Tuesday in August would be August sixth.
That would be a primary for municipal, because we're not having state or national next year.
And we don't usually have those, but whatever, if you think it's important, but it doesn't conflict with this regardless.
Right.
Okay, so four people have spoken, anybody else wish to speak on this issue? Are you making a formal motion? I had, and I wanted to open it for discussion. Counselor Atwater.
Might I ask Counselor Franco, you said that people are suggesting that we do this, could you elaborate more on what would be accomplished by doing?
Well, I recall that, like, even the night that we had been sworn in, there was somebody that got up to the podium and said, bring back having two town council meetings, so that the public can come back and speak more. And, and then also, it would get things, my perspective would be, if we agreed on something on the second Tuesday, it doesn't actually go to the town council till the next month on the first Tuesday. So I mean, you're waiting sometimes three to four weeks to get something to the regular town council meeting. Things would be, it would just be quicker, is my thought, too.
Might I suggest that, that if there were something that we felt was important to be dealt with within a week rather than three weeks, let's say, or whatever, we could then call a special meeting?
That's what we do have been doing.
But not make it a regular thing?
But I think during our regular meetings, our cows, we've been going back in and out, in and out, to try and get things passed, because we want to do things quickly. Counselor Baumgartner, that over.
No, I'm going to end up.
No, Overy?
A special meeting, is that open to the public to come and speak?
Hmm. You can make it, so, not necessarily, no. It's, it's all. It's, you could do it either way.
Yeah.
And if there's ever anything big, we always have a public hearing anyhow.
And it's been weird lately, just because we've had these, you know, school bonding issue, issue, and some unusual things come up lately. So it's been a little weird lately. I'm hoping that doesn't continue.
So, Counselors Aparry, Schmidt, or Parker, do either of you wish to speak on this? Counselor Schmidt?
No, I feel this works well, because we have special meetings.
Counselor Parker, did you want to add anything? I agree with Counselor Schmidt. Okay, so we've all spoken on this. Did you, are you going to make a motion?
I won't make a motion. I just wanted to discuss.
Okay. All right, so then, we have motion on the floor to recommend the resolution for approval of regular meeting schedules attached. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. So we are at now review of agenda items. I don't believe there's anything else. Mr. Burt, is there anything else you wanted us to take a look at?
No.
Any other business from Councillors? Councillors Aparry, and then Counselor Baumgartner.
I had asked the mayor for the opportunity to respond to comments that were made about me and directed to my opinion, as expressed previously, concerning our, our way of handling requests for funding. And the mayor denied that last week, but told me that I would have an opportunity to speak today. It's getting late, and I would be perfectly happy, I've written my comments out, I would be perfectly happy to pass them out for the, for the council, but I would request, in conjunction with that, that they be included in the minutes of this meeting.
I have no objection. Does anyone object to that? No, that's fine. Thank you, Counselor Aparry. Counselor Baumgartner is next, and then Heath.
I know last week, our TM member, Portia Bordelon, brought up some of her concerns regarding voting, especially the ability for folks who do not speak English to be able to read their ballots, as well as folks who cannot hear or understand English, if there can be any aids in place with the elections equipment that could enable them to vote and actually understand referendum questions, ballot measures, and, and the whole nine. So I would like to follow up with that and, you know, research a little more in depth. At the very least, if, you know, I know in New London, they had bilingual ballots, where you could read the ballot in Spanish as well. So I think given, especially that Groton is becoming far more diverse, and a lot of folks are moving in town who, you know, who may not speak English as their first language, just being able to enable all voters to vote and participate in our electoral process should be always our foremost priority. So I'm not sure if that, you know, I don't, may not have a specific, you know, referral to make, but I certainly would like to work on that issue before, you know, we, you know, have to vote in the next election.
I think there has been some move up at all with the manager.
The town clerk had made up the explanatory text in Spanish. It's pretty lengthy. When you look at a question, explanatory text is like a full page. She intends to put them out in both languages, but I assume, and I'll double check, that the actual ballot will be at least available in Spanish. But I'll check on it and relay the concerns and let you know what she says or have her respond back.
Thank you.
Is that satisfactory?
Yes.
Okay, so you have Counselor Heath and then Obray, or did you want to speak to this issue?
Yeah.
Would you mind if she speaks?
I wanted to suggest, Betsy had said that she didn't have any control over the voting and how, you know, how things were done. So I'm wondering, would it be constructive to maybe have a meeting with the voter registration group and, and share with them our concerns and what they think they might be able to do to make it a little better?
Sure. And I just, by the way, got a text from Betsy that, yes, I have a Spanish ballot. It won't be distributed to everyone, but it'll be available, on display and available.
You know, I'm kind of thinking that, you know, you need something on a wall somewhere as it's larger, that they can go over and read, you know. But I think it would be good to talk with the people that are in charge of things for that day.
I don't know if we could make it, can we make it happen before the December referendum? I doubt it, because they probably are in the process of ordering everything now.
Right. Certainly start the dialogue, though.
Right.
If not for this time, then for future ones.
Okay, so you've got, you're going to handle getting in touch with the registrars?
Yes, sorry.
That's it, I know. I just, I'm seeing it, too. Okay, so anything else on Counselor Baumgartner's?
I think she's saying she'll have a, she'll have a large display, too, at each polling spot, for people to see that.
Thank you.
Betsy, text me if I'm correct.
Wait for it. Counselor Heath.
Just to follow up, with the great blue presentation tonight, we did request a full report, so just a reminder to make sure that, that comes. We also asked for the report from the Groton Housing Authority, and I haven't received it, so I would like to get that. There are four things total. So number three, just a reminder to everybody, December 11 is the referendum to amend the bond, the bonding for the elementary schools. So my question regarding that is, is it, will school be closed? Is it 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
School will be open. I talked with Dr. Gannier, and he doesn't dissuade a large enough turnout to be an issue. But he's cognizant of it. We discussed it. I had some concerns over that.
Okay. And then, can we make sure there are no construction disruptions?
You know, yeah, we'll try. It's hard to, you know, hard to know everyone. We don't get the schedule of everybody. But, yeah, I'll see what I can find.
Beautiful.
Well, if there are, call them in.
Oh, yes, of course.
Get hold of me, and I'll go after them if they are. But I will, I'll ask her to reach out to different agencies.
Thank you for taking care of that last time.
Now, can you remind me again, what for the GHA, what report?
It was the annual audit.
Annual audit, good. I will reach out to them if I missed that, so I'll get with them.
And then, the last item is just to remind everybody to come up with legislative priorities. When did you need those by?
I'm meeting with her Friday. It'd be, it'd be nice if by the end of, well, at least midday Thursday, so I could compile and then send it to you all to get some feedback.
Thank you.
Counselor Obray.
I'm not sure of the date, so you'll have to help me, but I wanted to remind everybody that we're having a public hearing on the new light ornaments. So if anybody would like to come and speak, or please review it, then come and speak. What's the date? November?
December 4.
Was it December 4?
Yes, it is the 4th.
December 4.
Counselor Franco.
Hi. We had asked, well, I had asked for the ocean report from Dr. Gannier, and I haven't received anything. He said he would forward the water to me.
I will, I'll reach out.
From the Northeast Academy.
All right, and Human Services, I believe, is still collecting for the Thanksgiving holiday, so if anybody is so inclined, they may drop off donations at the Human Services building. Councillors Aparry?
I brought four turkeys over there last Thursday.
Very nice.
And I spent, well, I just wanted to tell you, I spent 10 minutes waiting in the waiting room for somebody to take them from me. And I finally left them on chairs and walked out. I let the person who was receptionist know that I was doing that, but there was no contact with anyone to accept them. I think that we sort of should let them know that it would be nice when someone comes by with a contribution, that they try to handle them promptly.
What we normally do is we normally place a phone call, and we say we're going to be coming over, and then they actually have people waiting at the outside door, and you load right into the room where the food is stored. Mr. Burt.
Betsy would like to remind people of the holiday festivities on December 1 at the senior center.
Oh, and so the light parade, that's right. Is there going to be a tree there?
Charlie Brown's tree.
Charlie Brown's tree.
Charlie Brown's tree will be lit that night. As will the nicely shaped one over at Groton Shopping Center.
Counselor Heath, again.
Just a note, it doesn't say anything on here about calling before dropping off a turkey, but I'm wondering if we want to challenge Groton City again to see who can collect more turkeys.
Interesting, interesting. And how would, what would the process be?
Sorry, distribution is on Friday, so you have to do it for.
Just make it happen pretty quickly.
Make it happen pretty quickly or do it for December.
Think a little late.
Yeah, okay.
You do a holiday choice and challenge, who memory would it be?
Certainly do it.
You know, AB has a lot of extra turkeys when the holidays come around.
Really?
What?
Yeah, really?
Yeah, they give everybody a turkey.
What do they do with the leftovers?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know. So maybe if we could possibly find out, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas, they give everybody a turkey, but not everybody takes one.
Turkey trot.
I'm sure they don't, I think. I'm sure they don't.
Well, I'm sure they do, too, but maybe we can get them over to Social Services.
All right.
Paula and I ran a turkey trot.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Atwater. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We are adjourned at 9:27. Good night, Betsy.